That our city might continue to be the bright place, the city on the hill, a wonderful place to live, to work, and to have been. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you for what you are doing. We pray this in the name of our Lord Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please rise to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, have an active engagement, and to the government with which we stand. One nation, united in one soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Counseling and motion on the work session minutes for February 16th?
Move to adopt.
Have most adopt on favor raise your hand.
Six with two abstentions.
Okay. Need a motion on the regular councilman minutes for the 16th of February?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have most adopt on favor raise your hand.
Six with two abstentions.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jump right on in and try to get through some of this information that we have here. Guess we'll first start with the COVID update. Want to say that again, our EMA department has done a fantastic job led by Director Christina Thorne, working with fire and rescue led by Chief Jordan and Police Department led by Chief Vern Spindley, doing a great job, I think, getting back out those second doses of vaccinations. The community has also done a fantastic job, in my opinion, in spreading the word around and letting people know why it's so important to get vaccinated. I know that you're going to see a couple of numbers there with, you know, 50 new cases and so forth, but that's over a day and we're seeing, you know, some positive tests go up, but at the same time, we're seeing those hospitalization rates come down. And we're seeing certainly the ICU levels go way down, so we're excited about that. And, you know, we hope to be getting toward the end. Many of you may have seen recently, as recently as this afternoon, being more federal acceptance of other drug makers vaccines. Merck is going to help out with J&amp;J, and so now there's the possibility between two competitors that are normally in the same market working together to produce the vaccinations, getting hundreds of millions more people vaccinated by May. And I think that bodes very well for us, and I think that bodes well for getting things back to normal late spring, early summer, and then hopefully getting things where we really want them to be in the fall. But until then, we'll remain cautious and we'll do our part to try to keep the word out there and to keep everyone aware of what's happening right now. For those that still have not gotten vaccinated, we still want to try to encourage him to do so in our COVID-19 task forces, still trying to do that and working with people to kind of meet them where they are, for those that still are skeptical about the vaccines. But again, I just want to commend everything that the city has done and all the hard work that's been put into it, EMA, 911, 311, everyone that's really been involved along with the MPD and Fire and Rescue in this endeavor. So let's keep it up and hopefully in a few months, we're going to have to go through this every meeting with that update and we'll see some numbers really being at the very bottom. Now I want to move on to just a historic footnote. On this date, 1955, a 15-year-old fought at Colvin, stood in rights of defiance for the rights of everyone. Obviously, we remember and we honor Mrs. Parks for what she did some months later, but it's important to remember that Ms. Colvin was just 15 years old at that time and marked the first action to challenge the segregation of Montgomery's bus system and a move that would lead to more and more discussions about how to organize a protest around this. And Ms. Colvin has gotten, has done some interviews nationally, talking about her experience. She now lives in New York, and we're working with her family and others to develop a meaningful and lasting tribute to her actions and her impact. And so we don't think it's ever too late to try to correct the wrongs that have been done. And as, you know, many of the members of the King Hill neighborhood have shown over the last few weeks with some of their honors for her, because that's where she lived at the time, we want to make sure that we do the same from the city perspective. This is also Women's History Month. And so as we honor Ms. Colvin, we'll be talking about others who've helped make Montgomery what it is today and want to celebrate those women who have helped our city become what it is and this community become what it is today. And so we want to honor those women who have made a difference, whether it's in our world or just down the road. So you'll see more of the social media and digital campaign to celebrate the likes of Mrs. Colvin and Mrs. Dur and Rosa Parks and many others who have made a big impact on our community, whether they be teachers, whether they be in medicine, whether they be in the private sector. We want to try to honor as many as we can and those, some have libraries named after them. I think of Julia Hampton-Morgan and we think of others as well that are still impacting the community this day. So you'll see us highlighting this and we certainly want to encourage you to do the same for those women, whether they be in your neighborhoods or just folks you know here in Montgomery that have made a tremendous difference. Don't hesitate to let us know. And if we ought to highlight someone, we'd love to have some of your ideas and some of your input in that. Because for us, it's important to do that even as it relates to people like Regina Sigler, who I talked about a few months ago, who made history as the first woman to join the City of Montgomery's inspections Department and with more than 30 years of experience as an electrician, just joining our team wasn't enough for Regina. So she made history again this year by becoming the first city electrical inspector to receive the International Code Council certification. And that is very significant. It shows her dedication and shows her commitment to being the very best. And of course, you'll see people like our executive assistant, Jamila Filliaw, and Judge Angela Starr, and Judge Dunson, as well as our own Brenda Blaylock and Diane Burke, who've been here for a number of years. We have a lot of history with the city and have espoused a lot of wisdom to mayors now and mayors certainly before me. And those are women who've done a lot during a different time that wasn't quite as open as it is right now to women advancing and to women being in leadership roles. And we also, you know, recognize Ms. Betty Beville, who was the star of the work session today. I told her she was very popular. She said she didn't like being popular, but she is. And she's also the only female finance director of any major city in the state of Alabama. And that says something about her commitment and her work ethic as well. And so it's women like that that have done tremendous things and that continue to do that. And I could go on and on throughout our cabinet, because we have women serving in those leadership roles that are doing great work, with Stacy, with S.K. and Yvette and others. And so we have that, and I think it shows, you know, the growth and the progress of the city of Montgomery, to have women in leadership roles who tell the men what to do a lot. And that's probably not how it was around here some years ago. So just want to make sure we highlight Women's History Month and let you know just some of the things that we'll be doing from the city standpoint. Now I want to get to some good news as well, and that's related to the Business Leaders Confidence Rating. We have the highest business confidence rating in the state. And for those that are in economic development and recruitment industries have a coveted high ranking with the University of Alabama Center for Business and Economic Research, and that's the Alabama Business Confidence Index. And in the most recent quarterly report, Montgomery outperformed our other big cities with a score of 58.6 for the first quarter of 2021, followed by Huntsville at 56.8 and Birmingham at 57.5. So this means business leaders in Montgomery are Alabama's most optimistic for the growth and success. I think that has a lot to do with the city council as well. I think it has a lot to do with some of the things that you all are proposing and the way we're trying to implement things from mayor's office along in a partnership with you. So government gets beat up a lot, but I think that in some small way that we're also playing a role in trying to move forward as well. And this report is encouraging because it shows we're cultivating a climate where businesses can grow, where business can thrive. There was a big piece, some of you may have seen, on our tech MGM initiative. The IDB was a big part of that innovation project, if you will. And I was glad to see that it got picked up, not only statewide, but even in some tech journals. So again, as we try to grow our presence beyond just the service and manufacturing sector and the healthcare sector, and certainly the government sector, we want to let entrepreneurs know that this is a place that, in particular in times of remote work, has the talent, has the capacity, and has the interest to work with them and help them get their ideas into the marketplace. And so that's been a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and we're continuing to try to spread that message around this country. And I think you'll see some other additional notices on that in the upcoming months. So we're committed to continuing our work by building more equitable and inclusive support system that encourages participation by small business owners. And we're working with national and international organizations every day to try to kind of build that infrastructure and build that foundation that puts Montgomery even on better ground than we are right now. And I feel very confident in where we are and some of the people that we have on the hook, that we'll be able to reel them in and have some very positive announcements that I think are going to surprise a number of folks about Montgomery and what we're doing. Business community, I think, feels good about this, and I think they'll feel better about even more positive news that we have coming. Now I'll get to the financial update, and I'll be very brief with this. I'm going to present just four slides on how revenue is trending for, in the city, for sales and use tax, a lodging tax, gas tax, and alcoholic beverage tax. And the sales and use tax are still trending up year over year, which is positive for us. The anomaly in the month of January was due to late delivery of payments that would have been recorded in December had they arrived timely. But because of slow mail delivery in December, several large payments were received in January and had to be recorded a month of receipt due to the city using a modified accrual accounting system, meaning that the cash is recorded when it's received. But year over year, the sales and use taxes are reflecting a positive growth rate of nearly 7%. And again, for us, that's very positive, in particular when you contrast that, as I tend to do a number of things with peer cities and other cities that are not having this type of output. Next slide, please. The lodging tax revenue is still indicative of a lack of tourism in the city. This tax for FY 2021 compared to the previous year has a negative growth rate of 37%. It's expected that the lodging tax will rebound once the pandemic has been significantly mitigated. I can tell you that even though the lodging tax is where it is, you know, we do have plans still going forward to build two new hotels downtown. Also met with National President of Hotel Owners, who's interested in Montgomery. They see the tourism dollars. They see the opportunity for cultural tourism in that marketplace to grow, and they're interested in coming to Montgomery as well. And that was probably one of the better conversations I had last week. And so I think as we move forward through COVID and the cloud starts to lift, we'll see some more interest from around the country in coming here and getting our tourism back up to par in the way we're used to things really going. Next slide, please. The gasoline tax declined in February to 17% more than the previous year due to a lack of travel in the city. Year over year, the gas tax has a negative growth rate of nearly 7%. Again, I think as we start to see schools open back up and people dropping their kids off at school and people starting to get more into the day-to-day routine that they were in pre-COVID, we'll start to see those numbers change. Now, I don't necessarily expect a dramatic change in March and maybe even April, but I think that we'll see a gradual change in the months ahead where this is concerned. Finally, the alcoholic and beverage tax revenue grew slightly in February compared to the previous year. You know, at least if people are drinking more, they're not driving. So overall, year over year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue still has a positive growth rate of 4%. And revenue is still coming in from ad valour taxes and business licenses daily. Approximately 93% of budget ad valour taxes have already been collected. Issuing some business licenses based on the number of licenses issued in the previous year is also about 75% complete. And so that's just an overview of kind of where we are in terms of our taxes and in terms of our revenue. And again, we're going to continue to look at the trends and look at, you know, how we can do things a little bit differently in order to maximize this. But I think we're starting to see some positive momentum where that's concerned. Finally, on the front of attractions and events, many of you probably saw the announcement of the Red Tails Classic coming to Montgomery, and I'm happy to see that Classic was announced last week. This was an idea I brought up to Kay McCreary and Johnny last year, as we talked about some of the events that we have in Montgomery. We talked about the marketplace. And we talked about, just quite simply, how we could diversify some of the events that we have here relative to where the city is right now. And one of the things that I brought up was, you know, trying to get an HBCU classic here. Thought it was very positive. It would be very possible for us to do. I initially tried to get the Tuskegee Morehouse game here, which has been played in Columbus for probably 80-plus years, but Birmingham had already beaten us to it. And that was fine. I didn't stop there. I told her if Birmingham didn't come through, then we'd be interested in doing that. But as a backup, what Johnny did after reaching out to Tuskegee was he pitched another game. And it was something that was really right in accordance with what I thought would be a very good idea to have a game on a Saturday, potentially a game on a Sunday on Labor Day weekend. And for Tuskegee to feel like Montgomery is a place where they can play not only a football game, but a second home, for many of you who are sports fans, obviously a lot of the other larger colleges used to do this decades ago. And with Tuskegee moving their game with Alabama State back to Turkey Day, we thought this was a great time for them to kind of start off the weekend along with what Alabama State has going on at their stadium. And so this weekend is going to be, of Labor Day, is going to be a great weekend of football and fun and events around here. I told them, they can't come and play football and not bring the bands. So we still got to work out something where the bands are concerned, but I think we'll be able to close that deal. But I am excited that Tuskegee and Fort Valley will play in the inaugural game and open the 2021 college football season, Sunday, September 5th at 7:00 p.m., and it will be broadcast on ESPN U. And so again, when you combine that with UAB playing here as well, we'll have a little something for everybody. And I think by bringing in the bands and maybe you having a battle of the bands with some of our high schools, we'll have a great weekend. And that's kind of what we're trying to do, is to have some energy to draw people here for our sporting events along with what we're doing with the AHSAA and other events as well. So this is something that we're proud to do in Montgomery, and we're really looking forward to it. And finally, just to reiterate an issue that I brought up, again, we recently renewed our membership with the National League of Cities, and we believe this can be a great resource to support the incredible work that you all are doing as councilmen and women. And our membership gives you special access to learn about best practices and ideas in other cities and have access to experts who can help us think through solutions through some of our issues here. And again, we don't want anyone to think that we believe we have all the answers, because we don't. I just talked with a former mayor of a large city today about some challenges that we have here. And so that has been helpful to have that mayoral pipeline that I can reach out to both those mayors that have been mayor here in Montgomery and in other cities in Alabama, but even beyond, when there are different things that are going on. And so we think it's also good for you all to have the same opportunity, and we hope to still take advantage of it. And again, this Thursday, there'll be a Zoom session for you to learn about the benefits of our membership while we're doing it and ask any questions that you may have. I said finally, but there is one more piece that I want to bring up, and that is the homelessness and the panhandling challenges that we have here. I want to let you know that the administration has been working closely with homeless service providers, mental health providers, and experts and community leaders to enhance how we address homelessness and those who are struggling in our city. And in the coming weeks, we'll be formalizing a task force that will be charged with providing a range of policy recommendations on how we can better serve that population and to reduce panhandling in a humane and constitutional way. And I know that Pro Team has reached out and you all have studied a little bit what Mobile is doing. And we want to make sure that we're doing things in the best way that serves our community and that respects those who are, again, struggling in a time of crisis and a time of need. And with that, I want to make sure that you also are aware of the Warming Center that's open at the Therapeutic Center on Augusta Avenue on cold nights. The center was open two weeks ago and had 23 people come in off the street one night. And EMA and Parks and Recreation have done a remarkable and selfless job operating this along with MPD and supporting the efforts. And so if we're going to have to reopen it, then we'll make sure that we also get some trained professionals, ideally from Montgomery Air Mental Health Authority, to help us in those endeavors. And so that's just kind of a macro view of some of the issues that you all brought to our attention and some things we're trying to do to bring some solutions to them. But we always welcome your input, and we always want you to know that our line is open. If we need to sit down and have a meeting, then we can sit down and have a meeting. If it's just a quick text, if that's easy for you, just let us know that as well. But we do have some good news in City Montgomery to share. It doesn't always travel as fast as some of the bad news, but we want to share that with you as well. And we'll continue to keep you updated on some of these partnerships and collaborations that are in the pipeline that I really believe are going to change the face and the feel of the city. So thanks again, and if you have any questions, I'll take them now. If not, I'll take my seat.
Mayor, I have one question. I know Alabama State partnered with MPS to vaccinate 800 staff members. I just wanted to see what was the city force blocking off vaccination for city employees?
I think that's one of the things we're working on right now, is trying to get access to those employees, trying to get access to the vaccinations. What we have been told is that we can't block off for city employees relative to the public. So like AUM kind of did their staff the same way. ASU has done that, and I think some other entities have. And what we're trying to do is make sure we can serve all the city. But we do have, I think, the ability for some of our employees to get access if need be. So you just share with us who the, if that's a particular group, be it an age group or a department, we can certainly look into that and get with our healthcare providers on that particular issue as well.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else?
Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the information. Okay, first item on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, item one, ordinance rezoning one lot located at 6815 Mobile Highway from an Ag One District to an M3 District.
Council, you got any questions, Mr. Tyson? If not, I need a, I need a motion on this item?
Motion to adopt.
Have most adopt on favor raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Item number two?
Hearing on the proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land containing 10.86 acres located on the south side of William Drive across from Hales Lane from R50, B2, and M3 districts to an Ag One District.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item? It's going forward or call in on the phone? Hearing none, seeing none. The public hearing's been held. It's proper for the council. Any motion?
Move to adopt.
Have most adopt on favor raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson.
Item three, ordinance authorizing an amendment to the amended and restated funding agreement with Montgomery County Community Cooperative District regarding Salvation Army property.
Mr. Calhoun, need a motion to suspend?
Move to suspend the rules.
On favor raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item four, preliminary and reimbursement resolution for the issuance of its GIL warrants and related matters.
Okay. Need a motion to suspend the rules on this item and a motion to substitute. Is anybody got any questions, Ms. Betty? Betty, anybody got any more questions, Ms. Betty?
I do, Mr. President, real quick. Is it, would it be too much to ask for us to break down the refinancing in one resolution and the bond issue in another?
Mr. Pierce?
Betty?
Mr. Pierce? Just take another.
I mean, I don't suppose it, I guess it could be broken into two separate resolutions, but it would be doing the same thing.
Can you pull your mic? Your mask down, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Come close to the mic, please.
I don't, I don't suppose it makes any difference to split it into two resolutions as long as the, you know, they're both, well, I guess if you...
It's one, it's really one bond, one issue, right?
Right.
Split three ways?
It's hiring a team to do a certain, you know, a job.
To take care of the whole bond, the whole issue.
That's right. And so, you know...
Well, I thought, I thought a resolution, this wasn't nothing but preliminary stuff.
That's all it is.
Well, then what is the big deal if it's not preliminary? Then what's the big deal of us dividing it up if some of us have an issue with the bond? I mean, the bond right now.
Can I speak to that?
Betty, you want to answer that?
Well, for one thing, if we do that now, it's going to throw us that much farther behind trying to close it in order to get the savings from doing the issue in the first place. We really need to have it.
On the refinancing or on the bond?
On both.
Well, and I can't...
Well, I mean, the interest rates now are at such a rate that you are going to be getting a better interest rate than you may get, you know, a month or two months from now. We know what the facts are now. And plus, it's going to end up costing us more time and probably money to be able to go back and try to get two resolutions versus having this one.
And I get it. And we keep saying, well, we don't even know what we want to spend the $50 million on.
No, we didn't say that.
Huh?
You said we don't need it on.
No, I said we don't know what we're going to spend it on.
Oh.
But yet, we're going to borrow the money and we're in a rush to get the money, but we don't know where it's going to go. And I know we got a chance down the road to vote on it, but...
That's what the ordinance is going to be about, Mr. Pruitt.
Yeah, you're not going to borrow our money without knowing what you're going to use the money for. You'll have to determine that before the bond issue is closed.
And then I get all that, then I, again, and then maybe I am just too stupid, that I don't understand what the big deal would be with breaking it up. But if we're in that big a hurry, and listen, I think the mayor's done a great job with the budget. I think he's done a great job with the refinancing. I just don't agree with the bond issue right now. And if y'all want to push forward, then I'm going to vote against it tonight. So that's where I'm at.
Let me, what's your timetable on getting, when you start this process, what's your timetable until the bond issue comes back to us for approval?
Well, we've been told that we're trying to close this bond issue by the 25th of March. Is that correct?
In order to get the savings, because we have debt service payments.
So you can be back at the next council meeting with the...
With an ordinance.
With the expenditures.
With the ordinance. It's what we would like to have at the next council meeting. That's why we have a...
So this gives you the opportunity to go and get started. Then on the next council meeting, you're going to come back and say, this is what you're going to spend it for. That way you can, we can vote it up or down at that point if we're not happy with what you're doing.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I'm thinking.
Mr. President, I want to make sure everybody understands that we're not even real sure where the money's going to go on the refinancing of the bonds that we've got.
Well, the point is, you won't know. When they come back, next council meeting, with their presentation, we will know where the money's going. It will be in the bond issue itself. It'll tell you that. So at that point, you can vote up or down. All we're telling you today is go look and pick and put together a plan, and then when you get through with the plan, bring it... you get through with the plan, bring it back and tell us what the plan is, and then we at that point say yes or no. Okay?
And you will know before we come before you again as a council what the funds are gonna be used for.
I know, but, but, but that's right, but, but that day we have to vote for that thing, we will know then exactly what's going on.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the answer.
It's two separate resolu, what are we doing?
Now, we're gonna run a resolution because you, you split it, you gotta, you take another month, another month to get this thing done. So which, which, the point is, next council meeting, we will know exactly, before we vote on the bond issue, we will know exactly how the money will be spent.
Guys, and again.
Mr. President.
And we're gonna vote, go ahead.
Mr. Pruitt, I'm just, we're looking at what we're doing. We're, we're voting on a resolution tonight. We're not voting on a ordinance to spend any money. Only thing, it's just like we applying for it, applications to go do this.
Exactly.
And once we get the application to get the process started, then we will see the numbers on what the money's gonna do and how much money we're going to the bond market to get. We're holding up something tonight on a resolution. It don't mean we going to no bank, no bond market to get not $1. It's just saying we wanna see what the numbers look like on the refinancing if we were to do this.
I, Mr. Calhoun, I completely understand, but at my house, I don't go borrow $50,000 and I make whatever swimming pool.
And you ain't borrowing money tonight.
But I don't even start the process.
Let me ask this question.
And we tonight, and I'm gonna say this, and I'm done now.
Okay.
We didn't even know 140-some-odd million dollars was in this resolution.
We do now.
Nobody up here knew that, and, and it is what it is, and, and, you know, but I'm done, and we'll vote.
What, let me ask this question, just for the sake, you know, just to kind of follow up with Mr. Pruitt saying, when you come back in two weeks, can it be two separate at that time, or do they still have to be in one?
On the ordinances?
Well, how, when we break, when they break them, can they break them? Can you break them up then? Is it gonna be okay to word them and break them up on just the ordinances that we have, or do we need, do they need to be in one?
Well, we've had three transcripts, like in the 2006 series, there were three different transcripts for each of those bond series.
Okay.
So they're their own separate issue.
Okay. So can we just have separate resolutions then next week versus the one like we have them tonight?
If you prefer to have three separate ordinances, you can do it with three separate ordinances.
Would that be better if we do that next week? Okay.
Do it that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna say the same.
All right, very good. Any other questions on Mr. Pierce, on this, this bill? Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Seven. Upstanding or no?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, next item.
Resolution carries.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it.
We got a substitution.
We didn't pass the substitute.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
The, the motion.
So we got a motion to substitute, Mr. Calhoun, would you do that? Back up.
Item number four.
Motion to substitute, on favor, substitute, raise your hand.
Seven.
All right. Now I'm voting on the main motion, on favor, raise your hand. Okay, now it gets you to the, we need to, okay, next item.
Resolution is adopted, is substituted. Item five, resolution authorizing agreement between City of Montgomery and Aldite for resurfacing on Palmer Parkway, on County Court, on Bill Joseph Parkway to benefit Project Lear Expansion.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Number six.
Application for an alternative transportation service by Brian T. Pleasant, doing business as the experience, the L S A.
Brian Pleasant here. Mr. Pleasant, come forward. Have you had another business here in town?
Second, sir, I'm sorry.
You have another business here in town? Did you have one?
Yes, I have eight.
I, I need you to talk to the finance department before we go any further.
Okay.
We're gonna postpone this for two weeks until you talk to them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Did you say you have eight businesses?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Well, I need you to talk to the finance department, okay?
Okay.
Very good. Carry this over for two weeks?
Yes, sir. Item seven, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Family Dollar Store at 2423 Eastern Boulevard.
Representative Family Dollar Store here, please? This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward or call in. Seeing none, hearing none. Declare the public hearing's been held, it's proper for the council. If they're not here, we normally just carry this over.
Yes.
So this will be carried over, the public hearing's been held, it'll be for vote on the old business next, next meeting, okay?
Item eight, application for retail beer and retail table wine owner off premises, doing business as Civil Axe Throwing at 39 Dexter Avenue.
I need to see these guys, okay? Representatives of the Axe Throwing, okay? I know this is a new trend, new thing going on, and it's, it's, it's interesting. Your names for the record, please.
Caleb White.
Caleb.
Kirk Netherton.
Kirk, okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward or call in. Seeing none, declare the public hearing's been held, it's proper for the council. Need a motion to suspend the rules, council?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
Have motion to suspend the rules, on favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
I got a question before we move to adopt.
Okay, I thought we, somebody might have a question about this.
Are you actually calling actual axes at targets or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they throw real axes.
But we don't have the axes and the wine and the beer separate.
Uh, so how it would work is the customers come in and they would be carded if they asked about beer or anything of, of the sort, immediately carded as soon as they come in the door. And they have the option to, we have all of our coach, coaches, which are kind of like servers, they pertain to each group and help them, teach them and whatnot, and they would get them the beer and wine if they like, they pay for it, they have either a tab or a card, they'd have to, it's all from the coach, though, they can't just get it themselves. And they can drink as they throw, it's an hour-long session, so it's beer and wine with, you know, people throwing. So usually if, if people were to throw axes and drink beer, it's not enough, it's not enough time for them to be inebriated. We also have several steps in line.
Okay.
To make it to where like, from step one, we see them as they come in the door, we card them. Step two, they, we have them fill out a waiver, you know, we have at certain points during that, like, we can stop them and see if they're inebriated. We also have had to turn some people away just because they come in, like, they say, oh, where are you coming from? They had dinner, and then they're inebriated or anything, like, we have the right to refuse them service, and we have in some, some cases before throwing. But yeah, that's.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
What, are y'all open? When do y'all open?
We are open Tuesday through Sunday.
You're already open.
Our hours during the week are on-call basis, but usually regular hours are during the weekday, three to 10, except for Fridays, it's three to midnight, Saturdays it's 12 to midnight, and Sunday is 11 to 7.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Need a motion to.
Move to adopt.
Have motion to adopt, on favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with that, new part of your business, okay?
Item nine, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
Need a motion to, to uphold.
Move to uphold.
On favor, raise your hand.
Item 10, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
Yes, ma'am, you got a question?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
No, we don't have no question.
I received a notice, I received a notice about a piece of property that I have. I didn't call and get on the list because every time I tried to call, or every time I'm talking to someone, they refer me to someone else and everybody, I'm running around in a circle. When I received, I went in, got a ethics review, I turned that in, and everybody's still running with their hands up, and now I'm receiving another letter about my property. So this one right here, it has a whole lot of different things on there, including grass being overgrown, and we already know that within this season right now, that there's no grass to be cut. And it has overgrown grass, building material, carpet, litter, junk, tires, trees, weeds, and wood. Think a lot of those would actually fall up under the same category, but it also have a pink and white and yellow van. We have a nonprofit organization that we function right there. This van is there, and the tires are there, we actually have kids that come out, drive remote-controlled cars around the van, and we put the tires out so that the cars can stay within a certain amount, a certain distance and won't hit the fence. Now, all of the trees on this property was overgrown, and it was a lot of it. We've cut a lot of stuff back, trimmed bushes back, and I've also received that I couldn't come and actually speak on it. When I tried to talk on it the first time, I was redirected again about the abatement that took place during, during 2018. So I said that the fees that they gave me were excessive, but no one, again, still won't touch it even after I went and received an ethical review on it, saying that I do not lose my rights as a state legislator to be able to come and defend myself as a person.
Right, you're, you're just a regular person when you come in here.
Yes, I'm just a regular person when I come in, but every time I get ready to come in, I can't talk to someone or I'm being redirected. So I said that the fees was excessive, and I still have to actually pay the fees, but now I got to hire an attorney to come and look at it, and we gonna sit Friday to talk about the fees that was put on the property, on some property that I was, that I purchased, and no work has been done to it for 25 to 30 years. We talking about a street no one occupies, there are no homes on this street, and when I called, when I received the first letter, they told me based on your ordinance that I pull, that it need to be cut back since there's nothing there, and it's more than five acres, to cut it back from the street at least five feet. We did that, but they constantly went back again and they cut it, tagged me with like a $10,000 bill for this property that had no houses on it. It has a sign up that say, no through traffic, keep out, that the city actually put up, and it's been there for like 20 years. So.
And no what? What's the sign say?
The sign says, no through traffic, keep out.
Okay.
And it has the white barricades up, and the barricade's been up for like, I don't know how long, but I am being charged excessively for some trees that your ordinance clearly says for the cut back five feet, but they went and cut more, and just so happened that one, I'm close by the water park, and then two, they filed it July 17th and came into office July 18.
So this has been going on since 2017?
No, I'm, they filed it July 17th, 2018. I came into my seat July 18th.
Okay.
Then nobody think that, so they tagged me for a property.
Have you, have you talked to Brandon, have you talked to Brandon?
Yes, I've talked to Brandon Hodge, I don't know how many times.
Okay.
About this issue.
We need, Mayor, I need, I need the mayor's office to step in and decide how to do.
And I've been sending emails, I've been talking to people, I've been running around, and just so happened by the grace of God, I received this, and now I get to come before the city council and talk. Because when I called and tried to get on the agenda, I got to have somebody to sponsor me, I haven't been able to get in here, and I know if I feel some type of way, I can only imagine how the everyday people feel about just trying to come and say some, something about something being wrong or being mistreated or unfairly.
Mr. President, excuse me, two things, clerk, we know, I know, we know, need your name for the record, and what's the address of this property?
To Sheena Morris.
And what's the address?
It's McGowan Street. We don't actually have an physical address, we just got a lot of different parcels. Now, the address for this property right here is 28 Luverne Street.
28 Luverne?
Mm-hmm. So I have some on Luverne Street, Greyhound, Greyhound Street, Oak Street, and McGowan Street.
We just talking about Luverne tonight, that's where the trees they cut that get?
No, that's Mc, that's McGowan Street. But it was just by the grace of God, I got this one for Luverne Street, so I could just come in here and being able to say something about the whole total project.
Okay, what's going on on McGowan Street?
That's the one with the grass been.
Oh, okay, that's a recent one that you just got.
Now, this one right here, I just received this one.
So that, okay, this is not from 18, but the one on Luverne is from 18?
No, the one on Luverne is from today, the one on McGowan Street is from 18.
Mr. Hodge, are you familiar with this?
Are you familiar with all of this? I'm familiar with the McGowan Street, yes, ma'am. This, this particular one from, that she mentioned this evening, I had no chance to, to look into, but I definitely will. I'm not sure, what, what date was that notice? Cause I'm not sure if it's something that's already been presented to the council for approval to be abated, or if it's something that's just been initiated.
No, it was tonight, um, yeah, it was, it was for tonight.
Okay.
So that's why I didn't bother to even call it, I'm just gonna show up.
Okay. Yeah, the ones you're speaking on Luverne, like I said, this recent one, no, ma'am, I'm, I'm not familiar with, I'd have to definitely look into it. The other ones on McGowan, like Ms. Morris said, we've spoken a number of times, what she mentioned is it's five acres, it's, I think, 20-plus parcels, and so all the, you know, everything we do, we're asking for approval to be abated on each parcel, and we did in 2018. I believe Ms. Morris actually started some work out there, and it had some issues where the work was never completed. We do receive complaints from time to time from neighboring property owners that we address on McGowan Street. The gate, the barrier, I believe it was put there, I'm not sure if it was Ms. Morris or another property owner in the vicinity requested that the gate be put there, but then there's also other property owners on the street that have requested the gate be removed so that they can access their property. If I'm remembering right, we did try to offer a reduction in the lien amount, included in each lien would be $150 administrative fee. We agreed because all the parcels were cited on one day by the same inspector, that we would agree to reduce, reducing it by the amount of 150 on all but one of the liens, and I believe Ms. Morris, I, I'm, I'm not sure where it went after that, cause I believe it went elsewhere outside of mine.
Because I couldn't, I mean, once it was set and we was talking about it, there was nothing else. It was like, this is all I can do is take off the administration fee of 150. So I appreciate him at least taking the 150 out, but we talking about $150 off of, um, and, and it, it came up to like a little roughly at seven something, $7,000 or something, that I still have to actually pay even after he takes off the $150. But my, uh, the, the gate came later. When they cut the grass, it was white barriers up. I requested the gate, and the gate came up through Claire, Claire Watson. So, uh, but the, what, the barriers was up, and the barriers had been up, I don't know if he knows, but they've been up at, at least 20 years. The street hadn't been paved in 20 years. I mean, it, it's basically, there's no street there.
Okay, so, but, Mr. Hodge, did you say 150 total, or you said 150 per parcel?
150 per parcel, like I said, I, I know it was, it was over 20 parcels. So it added up to a little over $3,000 of a reduction that we...
Oh, so that's why you got it to seven instead of 10?
Yes, yes.
But the remainder would have been actual expenditures to the contractor that did the work on our behalf.
So the contractor was contracted, and contractor paid?
Initially, Ms. Morris hired somebody, and they, they started trying to clear the land, cutting trees down, um, but the trees were just left. Uh, it, and literally in piles, humongous piles of trees. Um, and then the grass, like I said, it, it made it to where you couldn't get in there and do any other thing as far as cutting grass, because the trees were just in abundance. Um, and so our guy went in there and, and cleared everything that was left behind by her contractor.
Okay, so when, when I contacted him after I received the letter, um, not him, uh, one of the inspectors, and I told him, when I received the letter, what was going on. And he said, "Well, um, I understand, by our ordinance, you can just cut it back five feet from the street." Cause I didn't know that ordinance until he told me what it was. You cut it back five feet from the street, and you will be good. So if your ordinance say for me to cut it back five feet from the street, even if it is a tree 15 feet back up in there and no houses out, why wouldn't you follow your own ordinance?
Well, that one's a guess.
No, they, we have no exception outside of dealing with a large five-acre parcel. We have an exception in the ordinance that allows for a hundred foot, uh, excuse me, a hundred-foot perimeter cut, which would be a hundred foot off each property line that has an adjacent property. So it would be a hundred foot, but it's gotta be a single parcel of five acres or more.
Okay.
Like I said, this, this is actually, like I said, several, a couple dozen small parcels.
But they all linked together, they're not separate. It's like a...
Right, but they're, but they're plotted separately, and I think that's how they look at it.
They're plotted separately, but they are all together as one.
Right, one area.
So I had the grass cut back, what he told me, from one end of the street all the way to the other end of the street. But again, if it's a street that there's no houses, and no one has been down this street, and before you can get to this street, you have to come up Oak Street and the curve, wherever, where the street that we occupy every day, with trees growing over, and it's still like that coming up Oak. How you pass that to get to me and cut mine, and don't even cut what the city actually use?
Ms. Morris, let me, what, what, um, we know they did some work. Whether they did it to your liking or not, they did do some work.
They did.
It's at $7,000.
Yes.
I don't even know what we could do, but just let me ask you, what is it that you think is reasonable to pay for the work that was done?
Now, I can't just break down the 7,000, right? Because it's, it's billed by per, um, parcel.
No, no, give me a dollar amount.
So, um, I'm saying that each one that they giving me is a set, some of them are very excessive. Like, we got one that might be $700.
Okay.
Um, I might have six or seven parcels that's $700. So if you got one tree that fell down, or two that's laid down across three lots, and they cut that one tree, I get charged $700 per parcel.
Okay, for that one tree.
Instead of per one tree.
Right. But if, 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 if we could ask for some kind of reduction on this, and I don't really know what we stand and what we can do, I'm just asking, what is the dollar amount that you would be comfortable with paying?
I never thought of a dollar amount. I just asked him to, uh, give me a, uh, because they, I don't know, because we don't know exactly, y'all don't have a, a sheet to say how much it is for one tree. How much it is for the grass. Everybody just get to go, and, no, they don't have...
No, we, we do it through a competitive bid process. Most of the contractors who then submit their desired price, and we accept the lowest bid.
You got lowest bid.
You did it out every parcel of land, and that's how it went?
Yes, that's all connected.
And, and most likely, the contractor, knowing that he would prefer to do the entire street or, or the, every parcel there, manipulated his price to make sure he was awarded every one of them, rather than putting a higher bid on this one and not, not receiving that award, and then getting the one next to it.
Right.
So like I said, his, he was gonna manipulate his to make sure he's got all parcels that are adjacent to, to benefit himself.
Ms. Morris?
Like I said, in each case, we took the, the lowest.
What's the date on the abatement? What was the date on the abatement?
Um, I know they turned it in July 17th, cause I came in in, uh, 2018. The next, they turned it in the day before.
What, what you want us to do tonight?
We don't know what the number was.
I want them to look at it, reevaluate it, and give me a fair price.
Brandon, why don't you just look at it again, see what you can come up with, okay?
But, and I'm not trying, like I told him, I'm not trying to...
Go ask him to go back and look at it and see what he coming with for you.
And that's, when we first discussed it, that was, you know, initially, if anybody ever disputes anything we've done, the first thing we're gonna do is just ensure that we didn't have any error in our process, um, which is, when we first spoke, you know, from every, everything we had, we followed the ordinance.
It's kind of a unique situation, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Let's work it out.
Yeah, and absolutely, you know, we would absolutely be at Charles Mercy for anything as far as any reduction.
Okay.
I guess my one question, how can you go back and look if it was done a couple of...
We would still have some photos.
Okay, you still have photos?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
If I can say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the inspections department doesn't, once the council approves the cost of abatement, the inspections department can't unilaterally decide to reduce that cost. They can waive the administrative fees, but the council will have to take that action if they're gonna reduce any cost of abatement, since they actually approved it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I know our lawyer just said that, but I think based on, on, on the ordinance, the council says the fees are what it will be charged. And as Brandon was saying, is the contractors come out and they do the lower bid. Once the bid is awarded, that is a price. As a legislative body, that's not our authorization to go back and change fees. That's an administrative call. So if anything's gonna be reduced on the 7, $8,000, $10,000, that has to come out of administration, so we do it through the budget and financial process. We have anything to do with the money. Cause we already set the price of what the administrative costs is.
We can just tell them to go back and re-look, right?
Right, but if, if it was reduced, though, it'd be what we giving the contractor, right? That's where the loss would be at, or do we still pay the contractor and the city?
Already been paid.
Yeah, the expenditure's been made, so any reduction would be...